The council will come to order, the clerk will call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Arroyo. Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counsel Baker. Counselor Conley. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. And Counselor Yancy.
I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present, I'd ask all counselors and all in attendance to please rise, as I have the honor to introduce my friend and colleague Counselor Tito Jackson from District Seven, who will introduce Bishop Tony Branch of the Revival National Chapels of America from Dorchester to deliver today's invocation. After Bishop Branch delivers today's invocation, I'd ask all to remain standing as Counselor Jackson leads us in a salute to the flag. Counselor Tito Jackson.
Thank you so much President Murphy, I have the honor of presenting to you today Bishop Tony Branch, who was raised in Roxbury and Dorchester. He was ordained a minister in 1986 and served as a senior pastor at Apostolic Meeting House in Brockton, Mass. and senior pastor of Prayer Chapel Fellowship in Dorchester, Mass. He's a well-respected community leader and strong advocate for supportive housing, having spent 20 years in affordable housing as an executive and a consultant while successfully educating small businesses and startups in technology and business systems. I actually kind of feel like Bishop Branch would do pretty well in our space up here. Bishop Branch is educated in facilities management and psychology with extensive study in theology and pastoral counseling. Bishop Branch is a part of a ministry that feeds over 300 people per month. Most of his ministry in Boston is based on the feeding of people in our community. And I present to you Bishop Tony Branch.
Good morning. I shall praise the Lord at all times, his praises shall be continuously upon my lips. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Father God precious Lord, we thank you for the assembly of thy people. You are a merciful God. Please extend your hand upon this body, each member, each visitor, each soul. Lord, during the season of Advent, during the season of faith, we ask that you always consider us thy people, that we may be protected in our freedoms and in our work. That we remain Boston strong, that we, that no weapon formed against us, formed against this city, formed against this Commonwealth, formed against this great nation shall prosper. May this Council of Boston remain steadfast in the work of its citizens. In the name of our Lord and Savior, I pray, amen and shalom.
Thank you Bishop Branch for that inspiring message, please join with us as we salute the flag. Counselor Jackson will escort the clergy from the chamber. We have, today is the final city council meeting of 2013, and we had one big sports story. We have two big sports stories, I'm looking at one across the hall, across the chamber, but we had one major league baseball story this year, and everybody recognizes that the World Series trophy is here with us at the start of this year's, this last council meeting. I also have the honor to introduce a Red Sox legend, who the city council has taken the step today to recognize him for decades of service, both on and off the field, people of Boston. And that is a person who needs, in my view, no introduction, Louis Tejant, El Tejante, the great All-Star. I would ask them, they were, they're here as well, Larry Cancro, the Vice President of the Red Sox, and Beth Crutus from the Red Sox, if they'd come forward. End of the year here, and they also brought along this little nugget for us to pose and preen in front of, as we've been doing for the last hour. So I'd like El Tejante, who needs no introduction, an All-Star on and off the field. On the field in the 70s with the Red Sox, and if he pitched three games in a row, we might have won a World Series back in the 70s, but he pitched two in a row and he won them both. And then off the field, for what he contributes to this city on a daily basis. He's just an ambassador of goodwill, for Major League Baseball, for the Boston Red Sox, and an All-Star in every sense of the word, and someone we are acknowledging as, you have your own day today, it's Louis Tejant Day in the city of Boston. You can take us all out for lunch after this. El Tejante.
Thank you very much, good morning to everybody. Let me see what time? Yeah, no, good afternoon. I want to say, few words, I know I'm speaking that much, but I want to say hi, thank you to Juan Lopez, yeah Lopez here, to bring me in, and I guess he's starting something for me and my family, you know, it's something, I've been living in Massachusetts for 44 years, you know, winter, town, everything, you know, but I can tell you one thing about Massachusetts. To me, it's like my second country. People have been great to me when I used to play, and now I don't play from 1983, was my last year, you know, and people be really wonderful, they make me feel like a home, and I never see in any place I've been in the United States, a better city, a better state in Massachusetts. You guys been good, you love baseball, you love sport, and today you put me in the day, my day, you know, I don't know really what I can say to really appreciate it, what you guys do for me, the way I feel inside, this kind of feeling, you can tell it, you know, you're just keeping on yourself, because it's beautiful, it's nice, I want to say thank you to all the coaches to get together and give it my day, my family too, my wife she can make it, my kids, they in Florida and they can make it, but I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, to all of you, to be nice to me, nice to my family, and you know, I just played the game, because I loved the game when I was a kid, my father used to play too, you know, it was in my blood, and I can say to you today, this is my biggest day in my life so far, and especially when I married my wife. Very much, I even, I even checking, you know, I mean, when I used to pitch, I never check, I want to get the hitters out, and you know, like I said, the feeling you write, give it to me, I think it's wonderful, and I don't have any other way to say, I just want to say thank you to all of you, to be that wonderful night, because this is a special day for me, and be it for my family, and the other things I want to say to all you guys in there, that group there, you know, you play, you have to be in the game, remember, you have to eat, prefer lunch, dinner, and drink, whatever sport you do, and keeping your say clean, not just for you, for your parents, name, for your friends around you, your town where you live, and you see what happened to me, that's why, one of the reasons, this gentleman chose me to give me my day, because I behave, I do a lot of things good, I know perfect, but we all make mistakes, but you have to take care of yourself, and not only that, number one, you have to stay in school, you can do what you want to do. And the last thing I want to say, I want to thank you, the Red Sox organization too, because if it's not worth for them, I don't be here, okay? They've been good to me, they are a good organization, we're lucky, we got a new owner, the people involved in the game now, and I telling you the truth, this trophy here, I never thought we're going to get it this year, when I leave the spin train, I'll be honest true, I never thought they're going to be win the division, and not only that, they win the World Series too, because we have to give it credit to them, the manager and the people working in the organization, because they're doing a great job, and I want to say thank you to all of you, and have a good day, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody.
Of a true champion, Louis Tejant. I have the honor to introduce the Vice President of the Boston Red Sox for a few words, Mr. Larry Cancro.
Thank you for having me, I noticed since we started winning these, more people want to hear from me, and I have less to say than ever, but I do want to, on behalf of John Henry, Tom Warner, and Larry Lucchino, I do want to say a few things. First of all, I want to thank the city, and particularly the city council, for all they do for our community, and particularly the Red Sox, I know some of the city counselors, this is a time when they're sort of a changeover, and some counselors are leaving and some counselors are coming, but I do want to thank the counselors that are leaving for all they've done for our community, particularly our counselor, Mike Ross, and we look forward to working with all the new folks. We feel like every year the city gets better, and we want to be a participant in making this a great place. I had a few comments in mind, and of course Louis said all of them, but I do want to reiterate a couple things. You know, hardware is nice, trophies like this are great, but there's a lot more to champions than just actually winning the last game. I've been in baseball 37 years, I've been with the Red Sox at least about 30, and I can tell you, one of the greatest champions I've ever known in this man right here, Louis Tejant. First of all, most, many of you in here are too young to have seen the 1975 World Series, but if you saw him pitch in that World Series, it was the personification of a champion. This guy was really the best on the field, I mean truly, one of the all-time greats, and he really does belong in the Hall of Fame, just based on that. But beyond that, it's been my privilege to know this guy as a man, as a person that's part of the Red Sox family, and we really do kind of have a family in there. Some people come along and they pass through, and they're not really part of the family. This is a guy that was a Red Sox family member from the time he came, and still is, and he's the type of guy that will do anything to help make our community better, our ball club better, I mean you should see him around the ballpark, every fan that walks up to him, he spends time with, he talks to them, he talks baseball, this guy really loves the game in a way that the team that you just saw win the World Series loves the game, and they won the World Series because of their true love of what they were doing. It makes a difference if you like what you're doing versus going through the motions. He's the kind of guy, Louis is, that, pardon me, I have asthma, he's the kind of guy that if you walk up to him, as I have and many others have, and say, there's a charitable thing, I've asked him to go to some things for autism, because I have a child with autism, you don't even have the sentence completed, and he says, I'll be there, because he's the kind of guy that wants to help. So Louis, I want you to know that we have a staff meeting back at the ballpark, but everybody sends their love and best wishes, and congratulations on this being your day, you've earned it in more ways than just on the field. Possible way, and we're glad you're a member of our family and the Boston community, and we're all lucky to have you. Thank you very much everyone, and happy holiday.
Thank you Larry Cancro, if I can ask all members of the council to please come up, and also Counselor-elect McCarthy, Counselor-elect Wu, and Counselor-elect Zachim in alphabetical order, if they'll also come up and join the picture with the World Series trophy and...
You're tall enough, not too many tall people, and you are here.
Thank you, thanks everyone. We have a second presentation by Counselor Tito Jackson, let me introduce Counselor Jackson.
Thank you so much President Murphy, got a little choked up listening to El Tejant, and in particular his words to the young men and young women from the Play Ball program. Today we are joined by, to me, one of the most dynamic and amazing sports organizations for young people in the city of Boston, the Play Ball Foundation. It's founded by a friend of mine, Pat Harney, and some of his friends. The thing that's, and I have some information about it up here, the Play Ball Foundation actually works with over 1,000 middle school students, and has essentially put sports back into middle schools. Many have never played an organized sport before, and more than 80% live below the poverty line. Today Play Ball has 40 teams offering football, double dutch, girls volleyball, and baseball to middle school students in 19 Boston public schools. Through the experience of teen sports, Play Ball seeks to inspire young athletes to succeed in school, become engaged in their school communities, and develop life skills that will help them better be prepared to enter high school. I'm going to ask them to approach the diocese, all of them, to approach the diocese, come on fellas. But I did want to note, I got an opportunity to go to the championship games, and what a championship game it was, they actually got to play, Counselor Murphy, at the Harvard Stadium, which I never got to play at, because I was never good enough to do that, and we were able to come out with two championship teams. The Timbaulty, as well as the Dever McCormick are the 2013 champions for the Play Ball Foundation. In addition, the Play Ball Foundation has taken over one of the funds fundraisers in the city of Boston, they actually do, what's it called now? The SS Run, I guess I won't break that out for us right now, but it's a great opportunity to raise money again for sports for our middle school students. I'm really, really happy, there's many organizations that do this, but this organization really is one that inspires me and inspires all of these young people. So I'm going to bring forward my very good friend, Pat Harney.
Thank you Counselor Jackson. You know, I'll keep it brief, because we want to get these guys back to, back to the classroom, as El Tejant is encouraging them to stay in school, but we just want to thank you for giving these guys such an amazing opportunity. You know, part of what we do isn't just getting kids on the field and playing sports, a lot of it is getting them out to college campuses, it's getting them in front of government. We just had a nice lunch, and Tito gave everyone, I'm sorry, Counselor Jackson gave everyone a talk, and these kids didn't ask him questions about football, they're asking about government participation, they're asking about politics, it's amazing the things these guys ask, and these young ladies ask, when you get them in front of a crowd. And so an experience like this is really going to, you know, be something that they take the heart, that, you know, puts them maybe on a track, and gives them interest that they didn't necessarily have before they walked in these hallowed halls. So I want to thank the city council, I want to thank Counselor Jackson, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we have a lot of friends on the council through Play Ball, they've participated in our events, you know, they've supported us, and we enjoy having a good relationship with them, you know, as we said, we give probably, we're trending probably towards close to half a million dollars that we give to the Boston Public Schools a year to fund these programs, so, you know, we know that's a big part of your budget and what you guys do, so we're happy to be good partners with you. You know, we wish best of luck to the counselors who are off to new exciting adventures, and look forward to working with the existing and new council members in the, in the coming year 2014. Mostly though, I'd like to congratulate these guys, we're in the city of champions, as was evidenced by the trophy, but there's two other champions here, these two teams had great, great seasons, they played hard, and they had the grades to stay, they made it to class, they're gentlemen on the field, and you know, truly are the embodiment, they're up here representing our whole program, you know, these are the, two of the best examples of what we're doing, and they handled themselves with the best, you know, the best foot forward, and that we're really proud of them, and the whole city is proud of you guys today. So my congratulations to you all.
We'd like, we'd like both of the coaches to come up, but also the captains from the teams. Introduce yourself, let them know your name, and what school you represent.
My name's Caleb Blair, and I represent the Timbaulty. I want to thank you for this, for Play Ball, for giving us this opportunity to play football, and I hope the city can acknowledge this idea, and build this idea up, and probably increase the teams to play, more teams to play football. And the commitment of my team, I thank you for them, I love them, and I'm just glad they helped me a lot, they teach me, we all learn from each other, and we had a great season, even though every practice, Monday through Thursday, we'll stay at five, play in the dark, they was very committed, and I want to thank you for them, for helping me, and... Even on Fridays, we used to, we was also committed to academics, so every Friday, it's stuff is, having practice, we'll go to study hall, and stay committed, and stay on the academics, so none of us would have bad grades. And championship, it felt very good, and I just hope next year they could win it again. It was one of the best feelings of my life, especially celebrating it with my team, and I just want to thank them, and I'm very grateful for them. And I just want to thank them, and I'm very grateful for them and thankful. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Eva Nilo Demora. I represent the DMC. I'm really happy that I had this great three years' chance to play with my teammates. They are very nice. They are the best friends I could ever have in middle school. I wouldn't ask for a better team. We had our troubles. We had our happiness. We made it through to each other. I had the best time in classrooms with them. They are so grateful, and they work hard, and they know how real teammates should be and how it should look like. They support each other. We support each other. We always have each other's back, and I couldn't ask for a better team. Thank you.
And lastly, I guess it's not ironic that we have a day of champions that today is also going to be named the Play Ball Foundation Day in the city of Boston. And same day as El Tiante, young men. And you have an opportunity to rise to that great level that he has, not only as a player, but also as amazing men and women.
Councillor?
Yes. We'd like to invite the councillors up for a picture, as well as the councillor-elect also. I don't even, you know what? I don't, I don't, I don't, councillor Murphy, I don't know if we'd make the team.
Thank you. El Tiante. Thank you. The council will be back in session. I want to acknowledge the presence, I know we've already done so, but I wanted to acknowledge the presence of three councillors-elect who will be joining us on January 6th. Who are in the audience, Tim McCarthy from District 5, councillor-at-large, Josh Zakeem from District 8. I also want to acknowledge the presence of councillor Consalvo's better half, Michelle Consalvo is here. My replacement, Austin Consalvo. I also want to acknowledge my better half, Bridget Simmons-Murphy is here. Yes, all of you. And now for the, if there are no corrections to be made, the minutes to last week's meeting stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections or corrections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, Communications for over, reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1914, communication was received from the city clerk regarding the Fall 2013 Statistical Report, University Accountability.
Docket 1914 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1915, the Constable bonds, Anna Vieira, having been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer, was received.
Question now comes on the approval of the Constable Bonds under usual terms and conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Constable Bonds have been approved. Matters recently heard for possible action, yeah, we'll read the four public safety matters.
Docket number 1797, message in order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $1,629,867.15 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security funded under the FY Senator Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative for the purpose of supporting the city of Boston's comprehensive strategy aimed at reducing gun, gang, and youth violence in the city by targeting services and interventions to at-risk and gang-affiliated youth within the neighborhoods. Docket number 1887, message in order authorizing the mayor's office of emergency management to accept and expend a grant of $109,030 from the United States Department of Homeland Security, DHS Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, for FY 2012 award to provide resources to assist local governments. Those are the two. The other two, the line.
Excuse me. Chair recognizes councillor Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are two public safety matters that we heard this week that I'm moving passage on. The latter is for an SUV and other equipment for the mayor's office of emergency management. The first one, 1797, is a formula grant known as the Shannon Grant. This year, there's some new additions to it, in particular Mothers for Justice and Equality, as well as Sportsman Tennis, and a couple of other new additions. I'm saying this because whoever takes over for the Public Safety Committee, I guess my advice to you would be, it's important that we get on the front end of this process. Mr. President, you know, as someone who chaired this committee for, I think, over a decade, that often, and unfortunately, the administration would come to the council after all the decisions were made on where the funding should go. And I don't doubt that they engage in their own way with the community. Of course, they did. But we, as city councillors, do regularly and go out into the community and talk to the groups that desperately need these funds to be able to do the things that they do. And we really should be partnered on that effort. And so the administration should come in on the front end on these pieces. The reason why some of these changes were made is because, you know, the administration has been talking to the community, but they also heard from us. But it should be a combined effort. It would just work a whole lot better if we just partnered those efforts. So whoever takes over this committee on public safety, I'd encourage you to work with the administration to get out in front of these grants prior to them being let, so that the new Sportsman Tennis's and the new Mothers for Justice and Equality, who want that $10,000, $20,000 to make a difference in our city, can be identified sooner and not on the back end after having not received the grant the year before. I think that might be a better way forward. I'd move passage with these two matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage, docket 1797 and docket 1887. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1797 and 1887 have passed. Madam Clerk, docket 1842.
I'll read both of those. Docket number 1842, message in order authorizing the Environment Department to accept and expend a $170,000 grant in the form of, in the form of a grant, 2014 Climate Action Plan Update, awarded by the BA Foundation, to be administered by the city of Boston's Environment Department. Docket number 1844, message in order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept and expend $400,000 from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, known as the EPA, brownfields assessment grant funds to carry out environmental assessment activities on properties owned by local government.
Chair recognizes councillor Mike Ross on dockets 1842 and 1844.
1844 is a brownfield grant, and this will allow the city to manage another, I mean, anywhere, you know, maybe another 30, 40 brownfields. And anyone having brownfields in their district, whether it's private or public land, should know that there are dollars in the Department of Neighborhood Development to investigate those lots. If you have a lot that you're trying to figure out how to clean up, the Department of Neighborhood Development has resources to figure that out. It doesn't matter if it's a public or private lot. So I'd move passage on both those matters.
Councillor Ross moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1842 and 1844. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1842 and 1844 have passed.
Docket number 1760, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept from the trustees of the Public Library of the city of Boston, certain property known as the Orient Heights Building, located at 18 Barnes Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts, zip code 02128, Ward 1, parcel number 04382000. And the care and custody, management, and control thereof is hereby transferred to the Public Facilities Commission pursuant to its authority under the 1966 Mass Act, Chapter 642, Section 31.
Chair recognizes councillor Bill Linehan on docket 1760.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing here Tuesday at 9:30 in the morning, and the president of the Boston Public Library was in attendance. She made a statement. This is the only property that is still owned and in care of the trustees of the Boston Public Library. This would just allow this property to be transferred to the city. Public Facilities Commission is the entity that holds all property for the city of Boston. So I ask folks that they pass this matter. Thank you.
Councillor Linehan moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1760. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1760 has passed.
Docket number 1037, order approving a petition for a special law regarding the return authority of the liquor license process to the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes councillor Matt O'Malley on docket 1037.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1037 is an order approving a petition for special law regarding the return authority of the liquor license process to the city of Boston. It was introduced by our good colleague and friend-at-large councillor, Ayanna Pressley, on June 19th. It was then referred to the Committee on Government Operations. An initial public hearing was held on August 14th, and three subsequent working sessions took place on September 16th, November 19th, and yesterday, December 17th. I think virtually every member of this body played an integral role during the working sessions and the hearings. Obviously, this is an issue that we all care about, and I wanted to begin by acknowledging and really, just really celebrating the great work of councillor Pressley on this issue. She and her team and central staff worked enormously hard to ultimately come up with a product that I feel very strongly about and hope that we are able to pass it today. I will defer to councillor Pressley to get into more of the mechanics of the bill, but very simply put, this ordinance strikes the right balance of promoting and encouraging economic development. It protects those small business owners, and it makes sure that the control of this process goes back to where it belongs, to the city of Boston. So I urge you to pass this bill in a new draft and look forward to hearing more specifics from the lead sponsor, councillor Ayanna Pressley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor O'Malley. It's a home rule petition, I believe?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair recognizes councillor Ayanna Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I ask in advance for my colleagues' indulgence. I'm certain I will run over the two minutes, but I will do my best here. I've provided each of you something I don't usually do, which is a copy of my remarks, because there is a lot to unpack here. First, I would like to thank the Chair of Government Operations, councillor O'Malley, for his leadership in shepherding this legislation. I would also like to thank Christine and Michael from Central Staff for their support, and I want to thank my policy director, Jacquetne Prioli, for her work in leading this process. I'd also like to commend Mayor Menino for all of his work in recent years to advance this cause and for recognizing that the current law is antiquated, hurting our small businesses, our neighborhoods, and adversely affecting the city's economic growth. I took this issue on two years ago because it is an issue that impacts every neighborhood in the city. The home rule petition before you today is the product of over two years of work, including four working sessions over the last six months, which many of you have participated in, and I thank you. The final version is the result of valuable input from residents, neighborhood organizations, restaurant owners, Main Street directors, and the chair of the licensing board. Throughout this process, we have heard a range of concerns from the need for more city control, more available and affordable licenses, neighborhood saturation, disparities by neighborhood, and the impact on current license holders. I believe this version addresses all of these issues, and we've done everything we can to protect current owners. On the city control and equity front, this home rule petition eliminates the arbitrary state caps on licenses for restaurants. It grants full authority to the Boston Licensing Board to establish the process for issuing licenses. It prioritizes the distribution of licenses to Main Street districts, urban renewal areas, empowerment zones, and municipal harbor plan areas. And it eliminates the transfer, this is really key, of licenses out of these zones. It also sets a hard cap on licenses for packaged stores. On the equity front, to address the Main Street disparity that exists in our neighborhoods, the board is required to consider public need, which will allow it to address oversaturation neighborhoods like the North End and Austin-Brighton, and undersaturation neighborhoods like Dorchester, Roxbury, Mattapan, and yes, Charlestown and West Roxbury. These neighborhoods would like to see more licenses for their restaurants. Licenses issued after passage of the home rule petition will be tied to the business rather than the location. This will ensure that when an establishment goes out of business, the license will be returned to the city. This is a matter that was brought to my attention by councillor Consalvo. About two years ago, Townsend's Restaurant in Hyde Park shut down. But almost a year later, the owner retained the license, and no new business can move into that location because two licenses cannot be registered to the same address. The owner finally returned the license, and in that location, we now have a Fairmont Grill, and it is thriving. This home rule ensures that situation will never happen again. As you all know, the initial aim of my legislation was focused on restaurants. But throughout this process, we've learned that there were other businesses that were struggling and could benefit from access to a liquor license. And that is why the board is also encouraged to consider innovative business models that offer unique products and services. Innovative business models like butcher shops that want to incorporate tasting, like South Boston's, the Urban Art Bar, where you can learn to paint while having a glass of wine, and small theaters like the Boston Center for the Arts on the South End that want to remain competitive with larger theaters by having the ability to offer their patrons a drink during intermission. Finally, this legislation gives full authority back to the mayor to appoint the members of the licensing board, subject to confirmation by our city council. It expands the board from three to five members. Now, listen, we know that a license increases the potential for a restaurant to be successful. It is a critical variable, but not the only one. You have... And that is why one of the mayoral-appointed, city council-approved board members must be from the business community and have a knowledge of establishing businesses and implementing business plans. Restaurant owners agree the competition would be a good thing, but they did not want to see restaurants opening and closing because of bad business planning or preparation. One other board member must be from a Main Street, urban renewal, or empowerment zone. Now, for the biggest issue of contention throughout this process, the issue of license devaluing. After two years of feedback, including input from restaurant owners, I believe we have added every safeguard we could think of to minimize the impact on the value of their licenses. Here's what we've done. We granted the Licensing Board the authority to establish the process for issuing licenses after passage. I trust the experts to make these decisions, especially because the mayor, with our approval, will be selecting the new members. Grandfathered licenses purchased before passage, grandfathered licenses purchased before passage of the home rule petition. All licenses purchased prior to passage will retain transferability unless it was a restricted license. It will remain a restricted license and cannot be sold. We maintain the requirement that all applicants still have to go through the neighborhood process, as they always do, in order to acquire a new license or transfer a license to a new location. They will still appear before the Licensing Board. We gave the Board the authority to decide if and how licenses are purchased after passage can be sold, along with the business as an asset. This is a really key way that we're trying to address the devaluing issue. We heard this concern over and over again. When an owner wants to sell their business, they would like to be able to sell it in its entirety, including the liquor license. Just recently, I was made aware of a woman who bought a business, but the former owner had sold the license. Now she has this great business, but will have to go through the application process with no guarantee that she'll get a license. But let me be clear, despite these safeguards, we have to be realistic. The current market is an artificial one, and it makes opening a restaurant cost prohibitive. I feel very strongly that we have struck the right balance between protecting our current restaurant owners and providing opportunity for entrepreneurs. I ask for your vote in support of my home rule petition to return full authority of the licensing process back to the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pressley. Counsel will be in a brief recess at this time. Thank you. Chair used to be in recess because there is a clerical error in the final draft of the report, which is being cleared up backstage right now as we finish off. Thank you. Clean copy of the final report from the committee at this time. And if that is the case, and I believe it is, Counselor O'Malley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1037 at this time in a new draft. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those know, the eyes have it. Docket 1037 has passed in a new draft. Motions, orders. Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
I just want to be recorded in the negative.
Counselor Pressley can doubt the vote if she so chooses. Counselor Pressley doubts the vote, therefore Counselor Linehan can be recorded in the negative. Counselor Pressley doubts the vote. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consavo. Counselor Consavo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, no. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Pressley.
Yes.
Counselor Pressley, yes. Counselor Ross.
Yes.
Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancy.
Yes.
Counselor Yancy, yes. We have a 12.
12, the affirmative, one in the negative. Docket 1037 passes. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1916, Counselor Pressley offered the following order for hearing to examine Boston Police Department policies on license plate scanners and ensure individual privacy rights are protected.
Chair recognizes Counselor Ayanna Pressley on docket 1916.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Boston Police Department certainly does deserve credit for being one of the few departments in the state to have a license scanner policy in place designed to protect the privacy of individuals. However, clearly, there are flaws in the policy, in particular oversight of the policy. I want to thank the BPD for their proactive step to halt the program, as was reported in the Boston Globe this weekend, once concerns and flaws were identified. I am filing this hearing order today so that we can work in partnership with BPD, residents, and the ACLU in developing an improved policy that strikes the right balance between protecting public safety and ensuring individual privacy and civil liberties are safeguarded. But this is also an opportunity for us to raise awareness about the use of these scanners and the need for state-level regulation and oversight. I look forward to holding this hearing in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pressley. Clerk informs me that we must place this docket number on file and refile it again in January, so. Thank you, Counselor Pressley. Matter is placed on file. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1917, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Ross offered the following.
Counselor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1917. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The eyes have it. Docket 1917 has passed.
Docket number 1918, Counselor Murphy for Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor O'Malley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1918. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The eyes have it. Docket 1918 has passed.
Docket number 1919, Counselor Murphy for Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor O'Malley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1919. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The eyes have it. Docket 1919 has passed.
Docket number 1920, Counselor Murphy offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees.
Counselor Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1920. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The eyes have it. Docket 1920 has passed. There are four late-filed matters in the hands of the clerk, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy ordered that effective Saturday, December 21st, 2013, the following names be in case.
Chair moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-filed matter, which is personnel in nature. All those in favor signify by saying aye. No, the eyes have it. The first late-filed matter has passed.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy ordered that effective Saturday, December 28th, 2013.
Chair moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-filed matter, which is personnel in nature. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The eyes have it. The second late-filed matter has passed.
Counselor Murphy for Counselor Lamatina ordered that effective Saturday, January 28th.
Counselor Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-filed matter, which is personnel in nature. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The eyes have it. Matter has passed.
Communication received from Counselor Michael P. Ross, Chair of Public Safety, and City Council Tito Jackson. It is a report on the Gun Violence Working Group.
Chair recognizes Counselor Mike Ross on the report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry about the late file. And very quickly, over the summer, Counselor Jackson and I had an issue, a series of meetings in the community around public safety. Actually, one of the issues that came up was that issue I mentioned earlier about community involvement in decisions around funding of grants. It was a key issue that kept coming up. The reports being handed out, some of you participated through your staff as individuals. Hopefully, you'll take a look at it. We wanted to try to take that body of meetings and work and document it and record it as opposed to just let it go. So some of the thoughts and ideas of the people who participated in those discussions, and there were many, are outlined in this report, and I hope that it will be of use to all of you moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Chair recognizes Counselor Tito Jackson on the same subject.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to just thank Counselor Ross for the great work he's done as Chair of Public Safety and the great work that we've been able to do together on this. I think it's an issue that we need to continue with. I look forward to continuing this working group in his physical absence on the body, but definitely steadfast support for these issues. I just really want to thank him for his leadership in helping to make the city a better place and a safer place. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. The fourth late-filed matter will be placed on file. Anybody wishing Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Chair recognizes Counselor Mark Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Page two of the green sheets. Docket 1794.
Assigned for further action on 12/4/2013, message and order approving appropriation of $4,137,330 for the Josiah Upper, I'm sorry, the Josiah Quincy Upper School slash Boston Arts Academy, projected to be located at Apostle 25 in Chinatown.
Thank you. We had our first vote on December 4th. This is the subsequent vote to authorize the appropriation for the schematic design and feasibility study for the combined Josiah Quincy-Boston Arts Academy project.
Where it is a capital vote and requiring the second in order to take action, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote supports Counselor Siomo and the approval of the capital loan order.
Counselor Arroyo.
C.
Counselor Arroyo, c. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Counselor Conley. Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancy. Counselor Yancy, yes. We have unanimous.
13 in the affirmative, none in the negative. The matter, 17, is it 94?
94.
Has passed. Anybody else? Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1848, page 7 of 19.
In the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, docket number 1848, sponsored by the mayor, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council Action on the Designation of the Q. Wright House 24 Grandian Way, Dorchester, as a landmark, in effect after January 6, 2013, 14, if not acted upon.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
Yes, Mr. President. I rise to have the council vote to override this designation. Hearing was held on 12/12. The Landmarks, Preservation Alliance, and other historic Boston testified, and we received documents from the opponents of this designation. Many of our counselors are up to speed. Counselor Baker himself lives directly across from this particular piece of property, and due to his proximity there, he has recused himself from this vote. I just want to let folks know that. This vote is in no way indicative of anything the Landmarks Commission has done. They've done an extraordinary job. They always do. It's a matter of opinion that when a family such as the Thomasines have lived and owned this house for 63 years, that warranting a designation for Q. and Wright at this location, to me, is not warranted, and I ask that my colleagues override this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. The counselor is moving to override the designation by the Landmarks Commission, which is, he's put a committee report forward for all of us. So, a yes vote would support Counselor Linehan and override the designation by the Landmarks Commission. The clerk will call the roll. Eight votes, I believe, because Counselor Baker is recusing himself, are needed for the override.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Present.
Counselor Baker, present. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancy. Counselor Yancy, yes.
13 in the affirmative, none in the negative. 12 in the affirmative, one voting present. Docket 1848 has passed. The Landmarks Commission designation has been overridden. Anybody else wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets at this time? Seeing and hearing no takers. There are five late-file matters, which in absence of objection will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Chair recognizes Counselor Matt O'Malley.
I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement, Mr. President.
Please proceed, Counselor.
Thank you. I wanted to begin by saying, a month after I joined this body, I cast my first vote ever for Steve Murphy for Council President. And it wouldn't be my last, and I just wanted to thank you for your leadership over the last three years as our council president.
Thank you, Counselor.
You've done an admirable job. I also wanted to acknowledge our folks from the administration, who won't be returning. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work with each and every one of you for the last two years as Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. I've enjoyed the flurried and frenzied phone calls the night before the council meeting, which continued up through last night. And thank you, and I wish you all well, whether you're staying with the new administration or moving on. Thank you for all you've done. This is a real time of change in the council. Almost a third of our members are leaving, and I just wanted to briefly, I know others want to get, say a couple words, acknowledge the four men who won't be coming back, counselors Arroyo, Conley, Consalvo, and Ross. For me, both personally and professionally, you guys have been invaluable colleagues and friends. As the District 6 Counselor, we had three counselors living in District 6. Counselor Arroyo in Jamaica Plain, Counselor Conley in West Roxbury. I've worked so closely with Counselor Consalvo as my neighbor in the Parkway, particularly focusing on West Roxbury and Rosendale, and Mike Ross, my neighbor in Mission Hill. We've had some wonderful times working together and even running together many cold mornings, talking about the issues. And I just want to say, guys, it's been an absolute honor and a privilege. You guys are incredibly talented, committed people, and your legacy is one that is incredibly rich. And I promise, on behalf of my colleagues and our new colleagues, that next year we will continue the fight for education, for looking at ways to stop poverty, for making sure that we are smarter and more innovative, and perhaps most importantly, for bringing rubber sidewalks to the city of Boston. So, I'd just like to say, thank you all. This is a better council and a better city because of each and every one of you, and we will miss you. Best of luck and congratulations.
O'Malley, Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancy.
Thank you very much. Unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Please proceed, Counselor Yancy.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Thomas M. Menino. He and I were elected to the City Council in 1983. We've had some good times and some bad times, but on balance, I think Tom Menino deserves all the accolades he's been receiving. As mentioned at the last session, Tom Menino did join me in the South African divestment legislation in 1984. He joined me on the anti-tobacco legislation as well, even though eventually he voted against it. But he redeemed himself once he became mayor to ban smoking in all public places. He should be commended for that. So, for the 20 years as mayor and 10 years as City Council, we owe a debt of gratitude to Mayor Menino and his family for the sacrifices that they have made, not on behalf of themselves, but on behalf of the residents and citizens of Boston. I also rise, Mr. President, to thank Counselor Arroyo for his energy, for his spirit, for providing a unique voice on this body, for being a staunch advocate for the working people and labor, and for education, and for doing an excellent job following in his dad's footsteps, who I also have the honor of serving with. To Counselor Conley, there's no question of his commitment to education, and I suspect that will continue. I want to thank him and his beautiful family for all their work. For one of the most prolific legislators in the city of Boston, Counselor Consalvo, I want to thank you for your work. And while it's true, I didn't agree with everything from any of our colleagues, I didn't agree with certainly everything from the mayor's office, I certainly gained a great deal of respect for the commitment that Counselor Consalvo brought to this body in legislative issues. To Counselor Ross, I want to thank him for the unique voice that he brought to this body. He brought a very important perspective and a unique perspective on the whole issue of human rights, which from time to time he was able to raise. To you, Mr. President, I don't know how you managed three years, but I commend you for the stewardship that you've provided this body, very steady stewardship as President of the City Council, and I want to thank you and your family for the many sacrifices. And to Counselor-elect Wu McCarthy-Zachom and returning Counselor Flaherty, I certainly look forward to the new energy and perspective that's being brought to the legislative branch of city government, which I always believe, and hopefully everyone here would agree, is a co-equal partner in city government. The mayor, in spite of his will and tenacity, cannot pass a law without the approval of the City Council. No budget can be passed without the City Council. So, we have the power of the ordinance and the power of the purse. And from time to time, we have to remind the mayor, including perhaps even the incoming mayor, who I look forward to working with, this council is going to do everything possible to make sure that the next administration is successful, because the success of the administration in a very real sense means the success of the city. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve with you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Yancy. Is there anybody else wishing to? Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson.
Mr. President, I, actually unanimous consent to make a statement.
Please proceed.
I also want to thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership. You actually gave me a new office. Truly appreciate that, and it was very special to me to be able to get sworn in in my district. And it was a historic occasion, but a very special one for me personally, and I want to personally thank you for that, as well as your leadership throughout these three years. I also want to give credit and props to Mayor Menino for the great work he has done. My first budget that I passed was actually in, I believe, 1992, when I was part of the mayor's Youth Leadership Council, and we came up short, and we actually ended up raising taxes when I was 17. I haven't done that on the council, but definitely gave an opportunity for many young people like myself to see what government is about, and then also to have an opportunity to serve. I want to thank the people from the mayor's office that we've worked with and the things that they've given us, the guidance that they've given us, and also sometimes the fights that we've had. But I really want to thank you for your service to the people of the city of Boston. To Mike Ross, I want to thank you for being a friend, a city council big brother, and also for guiding me along the way. I want to thank my neighbor, Rob Consalvo. I've learned so much from you. You never, and actually as I'm doing right now, you never, ever are under two minutes. I will be buying eight pit bulls because of you, but I truly, truly appreciate the work that you've done and the attention that you've paid and the model that you've been. To Counselor Conley, your dedication to the children and the uplift of kids in the city of Boston is unparalleled. I truly appreciate the work that we've been able to do together. I know that you will continue to be a voice for those young people and that generation that comes along after us. It's the most important thing that we will continue to do, and we will continue to keep that voice alive. And I want to thank you for your work, and I want to thank you for your dedication and your family's dedication to doing what you've done for the city of Boston. Counselor Arroyo, my very good friend, I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve with you. I want to thank you for your strength of character and also your guidance here. I look forward to seeing what all of you will do, because your time here as leaders is distinguished, but we also know that your time outside of this body will definitely be distinguished, and we look forward to great and amazing leadership and in the manner that you served here. So, Counselor President Murphy, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with counselors Wu, McCarthy, Zachom, and Flaherty. You are bright new shining stars, and we look forward to taking the city to that next level in Boston 2.0. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Chair recognizes Counselor Mark Siomo.
Unanimous consent, Mr. President.
Please proceed, Counselor Siomo.
First, thank you for your leadership and friendship these past three years. You've been a source of comfort to me in sickness and in health.
Are we getting married? Good times.
And good times and bad. I now pronounce it now. You've done a great job, and, you know, we'll certainly look forward to you in one of your seats back with the rest of us, too. To the mayor, you know, the best mayor in my lifetime, without question. He's done a fabulous job. He's leaving our city, a much better city than it was 20 years ago, and I just want to personally thank him. And to our departing colleagues, who, I actually had a personal relationship with almost all of you before I became an elected member and served with you, had the honor and privilege to serve with each and every one of you. Counselor Arroyo and I coached RBI baseball, and I want to thank you for all those wins we got. Counselor Conley, both you and I came in together in 2008. I actually tried to spearhead your effort in 2005, and we became close actually before that. My two sons went to Roxbury Latin, John's an alum, and we met prior to them getting into Roxbury Latin. And you've always been a great friend to me and my whole family, and your dedication to this body, to the issues, not just education, but all the issues. And when we came in together, we sit together, we co-chaired education and Ways and Means together, we had offices together. So, there's going to be a void for me a little bit, even though I welcome our new colleagues with open arms and really look forward to working with each and every one of you. Counselor Consalvo and I go back to about 2002, when he was first running at large, and had a recount, and I was approached to get the signatures, and remained friends and once again had the honor and privilege to serve with you, and we'll miss you very much. And Counselor Ross, I worked with your dad when I was a teacher with the City Roots Program, and he was an inspirational speaker to talk about his plight during the Nazi occupation and his internment in the camps, and met you back then and became good friends, and I know you still affectionately call me Number Seven from a couple of years ago. And I will always appreciate the friendship and your leadership during the tumultuous times we've all shared, especially these past six years. So, I will probably save most of my heartfelt. So I will probably save most of my heartfelt comments privately, but I just wanted to say publicly how much it's meant to me to work with each and every one of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Seoma. Chair recognizes Council Sal Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I ask for unanimous consent.
It's all going south now.
First, let me say, Mr. President, it's been an honor to serve as your vice president for the last three years, and to have my little vice president door open. If it wasn't open, I'd be banging on it. But you did a great job as president of the city council. But I also want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and the staff. I am probably one of the luckiest guys in the world to have worked with Mayor Menino for 20 years and worked with the Menino administration for 20 years. Great people, I will miss them dearly. This city is a better place, and I do look forward to working with the new mayor. But the body, let me just say, I am so proud of this body. I've been on this body for seven years, and for seven years, we've gone along with each other. In the past, in the past, it was always the city councils fighting with each other and a lot of negativity, but that did not happen in this council for the last seven years. And to my four colleagues that are leaving, you made us proud. You ran for mayor, all for you, because you really made the city council proud. You went out there and you campaigned for the issues that we work for every single day in this body, to make Boston a better city, to care for people. And that's why we're in this business, is to help people. Felix, I'll miss Felix. He was like my little son on this little council when he first came in. And, see, see, though politics might not always be the same, but Felix, you really worked hard, and I really commend you in that. Councilor Connolly, great job. I always admire your speeches and your dedication to the kids and the children of the city of Boston. I always enjoy. I thought you would make a good mayor, like my four colleagues here. What do I say about my pal Rob Consavo? A member of the Italian caucus, there's three of us. Now there's two.
Oh, but sure.
Now there's two, but I heard we have a Sisian on the body that we will be recruiting. But Council Consavo, I just love him. I think he was, you know, I learned a lot from him. A hard worker as city council. We're going to miss, I'll miss you on this body. Always looking for new ideas, and I just enjoy your company. I'll miss a little fight that we have, and I thought we would have one big fight before you left. Put the gloves on. But you're great. And Mike Ross, you did a great job here in the city council. I am so proud of you, your ideas, particularly when you were the president, you did a good job as president. And I'll never forget us three being on a special committee in the Boston Common, going to New York City and bringing some of those ideas that we have at the Boston Common today, and that's because of you and your leadership. I welcome our new colleagues, Council Wu, I'm excited to have you onboard, and Zachom and McCarthy, who I have worked with for many, many years, and I hope that we'll continue to work together for a better Boston. I'm so proud to be a city councilor today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lamatina. Chair recognizes Council Ayanna Pressley.
Tempted to say I'm at a loss for words. Very moved by the eloquent remarks already stated by everyone in this body who I just hold in very high esteem, highest regard, just tremendous respect for all of you. But I will offer more personal remarks to all of the members of the body that are leaving. But very briefly, I did just want to not only acknowledge our mayor, Tom Menino, but I'd like to acknowledge Angela Menino. It has been said that there can be no public accolades without great personal sacrifice. And Mr. and Mrs. Menino, you know, our mayor and our first lady, have made great personal sacrifice. Their service has been nothing but really a labor of love. And so I want to say thank you to them and to the mayor's entire team. For those, it's unbelievable that we still have to demonstrate, remind people every day of the good work that happens in government, that government is good, and that people that do this work are tireless. And, you know, I just want to thank the mayor's entire team for their tireless commitment and sacrifice to the residents of the city of Boston, to our council president. You quite literally stand heads and shoulders above us all. We thank you. We thank you very much. I know sometimes we can be a wily bunch, but you have, you know, just shepherded this body very well. And just on a personal note, I will just forever be indebted for your having the entire body come to eulogize my mother at her homegoing, and I thank you for that. And it was her honor to serve alongside me on this body. I think she thought she was the 14th member, so. And I'm going to try to speak very briefly to the departing members of the body with one adjective. There are many things that I could say, but since I've also just passed this legislation with your support, I've got food on my mind thinking about restaurants. So I want to say, Felix, I will miss your passion, and every time I see a bottle of hot sauce, I'll think of you. Councilor Connolly, I'll miss your tenacity, and every time I think of a baked good, I'll think of you. We share that love. Councilor Consavo, thank you for your pragmatism, and every time I drink a Diet Coke, I will think of you. And Council Ross, and again, there's so many adjectives I could say, but I'm trying to err towards brevity here. You know, that's hard for me, preacher granddaughter and all that. But Council Ross, I want to thank you for your vision, and every time I drink peppermint tea, I will think of you. But although there are many adjectives I could use to describe all of you, you know, our mayor, our council president, all of you that are departing, and all of you that are remaining on the body and that will be joining, there's one word that I think everyone here has in common, and that is resilience. You know, I still believe that this work, there is no nobler endeavor to pursue, and this is the most rewarding and fulfilling work that one can do, but it is not without its challenges. It can be daunting, and it can be depleting, but we're still standing. And so I just want to take my hat off to all of you for your sacrifice, and I want to commend and applaud all of your staff, because we all know that we cannot do this work without them. They make us look damn good. So I want to acknowledge the central staff, all the council staff, all of your families. And then I'll just close with this, again, just in recognizing, you know, that too often people are so focused on the dark side of politics. Madeleine Koonen, who's one of my She-Rose, who was the former governor of Vermont, said that when politics is at its best, that justice can triumph, that wrongs can be righted, and pain can be alleviated with the right fix. And it has been such an honor to work with all of you to strive towards that right fix for the last four years. God bless.
Thank you, Council Pressley. Chair recognizes Council Frank Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't sit down and not say anything. Everybody else got up, so it's my turn, I guess. Huh? Yep, that's me. Mr. President, thank you for your, for me, it was two years, it was three years on this body. It's been a great learning experience. I have to also thank Mayor Menino and also, like everybody else, his family. I've noticed what your family goes through when you put your name forward and you're in the paper, you're in the public. It's a difficult task, so I thank him for his stewardship also. But mostly, I'm standing to thank Felix and John and Rob and Mike. I've gotten to know you all. I consider you friends. Thank you. Everyone here, it's not just the four departing colleagues, but everybody here. I was the new person here two years ago, and whatever person I called, for whatever issue it was, everybody's been great to me. But with my four colleagues leaving, I thank you for helping me first off, which helps my district. I consider you friends, and I don't think we've seen the last of you. I need your keys.
Hint, hint.
Had to throw a joke in there, but I also want to thank you all for, I also want to thank you all for running for mayor this year, because I think we had a special, we had a very special election season. It was diversity of ideas, and I think because of what you have all done, I think the city is going to be in good shape in the next, we'll call it the next term. I thank you, and I look forward to remaining friends. And also, one more comment that Council Pressley, I have to thank you. This year was a little bit difficult for me. I had two major deaths in my family, and the council was all there for me. And also, Steve, you made sure that everybody was able to attend services, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Chair recognizes Council Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do I have to ask to make a statement?
Please proceed, Council Linehan.
You know, it's tough getting up here last. I did push the button a long time ago, but the president ignored me for whatever reason. But I, yeah, first, I want to thank you, Steve, for your extraordinary job over the past three years. You led this body in what I would consider, and I've been in this building 25 years, some of the most extraordinary times that we had, and I'll point some of them out, you know. It goes for all of the colleagues that are leaving now also. But you, since I've been here on the council, we've had three very strong presidents who have led us, and you did a great job. And to the clerk, to Mike Ross, and to you, that's, you just continue to set the bar higher for all of us, whoever may have the opportunity to precede you. So I want to say goodbye to, because that's what this is, it's sort of a goodbye, and I'll do it in alphabetical order so I don't get in trouble. And when I think of Felix Arroyo, you know, his energy, of course, and how passionate he can be about so many things, really, all good things, and someone who, still today, I asked him, he's only 34 years old, and that's quite young to have already established himself as a city councilor. I did work with his father, and I could probably say that for each of my colleagues that's leaving. I've worked with their fathers, and their fathers should be, and I know they are quite proud of what their sons have done on the Boston City Council. And I think of the fire contract and how Felix, you know, was a true leader at that time on matters around unions that are so important to him. And I learned from him, and I worked closely with him on that. So I'm going to miss you in that regard and in all regards, Felix. John, most people know John through his continued diligence on trying to make the school system a better place for our children in Boston. He's done an extraordinary job. He's elevated the Boston City Council as a voice for Boston schoolchildren, and everybody recognizes that now, even the administration and the school department. And so that's a really good thing. But, you know, he and I first began doing some things around the transliteration ballot, which John authored, and I worked with him on. And then also his green agenda, because he was steadfast in pushing green initiatives on behalf of the city council when he first came on. So amazing, and I truly enjoyed working with you. And Rob Consavo, I do know his dad and worked with his dad in the Flynn administration, and he's, they used to say that Tom Menino was the best district city councilor, and then they said that Jimmy Kelly was the best district city councilor. But in the past decade, clearly, the best district city council was Rob Consavo, because he did an extraordinary job. No one, no matter how hard we tried, Sal, Rob was clearly the person who took the greatest amount of passion for his district, and he did an extraordinary job. And to my, as I'm using the parental theme, that Steve Ross handed me my first application to the college boards, and he said, "I can give you this, and you don't have to pay. You do this, and you can go to college." So I did a lot of those things that he steered me in the right direction. As Sal indicated, Mike and I had, I and Sal, we had this special committee on the Boston Common, which elevated the Boston City Council's position on open space matters and especially the historic parks and the Boston Common. Well, the Boston Common is a different place today. It still needs stewardship, it needs a lot of work. We need to still push funding for it, but the elevation that was given to the leadership of Mike Ross needs to be recognized, and I thank him for that. So I wish you all well. Thank you, Mr. President. Since everybody mentioned the Menino administration, I, as many of you know, I worked for the mayor for 14 years, and then I worked with him for seven. And it was a lot easier to work for him than with him. No, but Tom Menino knows that I love what he did to the city and that I've been a friend. If Sal is his most favorite and loved son, well, then I'm the prodigal son. But I want to thank the Menino administration, I want to thank your leadership, and I wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Chair recognizes Councilor John Connolly.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I just want to thank all my colleagues for their very kind words. They mean a lot, really appreciate them. And I will miss, I will miss everybody. I will see everybody, but I will miss everybody in being able to be here with you and do this, do this job. And I just want to say, I loved this job. I absolutely loved it. And people would make jokes about being on the city council and things like that. I make them too sometimes, but I love being a city councilor. I absolutely love this job, and maybe some of it had to do with the job I had before I got here, or some of you may have heard I was a corporate lawyer at one time in my life. If you've ever practiced corporate law, this will make you want to be a city councilor in the worst way. But I loved, I loved my six years here, and at the same token, after the 2011 election, I really started feeling that it was having a real impact on my family, and that began a long deliberation for me where I ultimately decided I wasn't going to run for reelection in 2013, and just honestly, the decision then became, I was either going to just leave the body and politics, or I was going to run for mayor. And now I get the opportunity to fulfill both. I ran for mayor, and I'm going to leave politics. But what I'm saying there is just, I love this job, but I also think it's time for me to move on, because you put your heart and your soul in it, and it takes you away from your family. And that's why I say to all of you who do this, I have the utmost respect for you, whether I agree with you or disagree with you on an issue, I know the sacrifices you make to do this job, and I greatly appreciate it, and I'll be thinking about that every day as I watch you in this job over the next two years. Thank you for the sacrifices that you make for Boston. It's much appreciated. I want to thank Mayor Menino. He's a great mayor, been a great mayor for 20 years. He's done great things for the city. And I'm a kid from Roselandale, and I lived in one of those precincts that was always moving around and redistricting, but it didn't matter whether you were in his district or not. If you lived in Roselandale, you knew Tom Menino, because he did for Roselandale as a councilor what he then did for the whole city as mayor. And he's an incredible man, and he's been an incredible mayor, and I've learned so much from him. And I've had great rapport and dialogue with him during that time as well, whether people may not even realize that. But he's really, he's really just an incredible person with a huge heart, and I think his staff is a reflection of that as well, and I thank his staff for everything that they've done and how hard they worked, even when we didn't see eye to eye on things. I always knew they were trying to do what they believed was in the best interest of a Boston. And they did great work for 20 years, so I thank them. And Mr. President, I thank you for your great leadership and you're so good to me in allowing me to chair the Committee on Education and really do exactly what I wanted to do in here, even when I was driving you crazy or whatever the case may be. You always gave me that peace and you always, you always thought about the body as a whole and what that meant and the importance of this body having its voice and its place in government. And that would go for the other two council presidents I served under. I was incredibly lucky to work with Mike Ross, who was a great council president, and Maureen Feeney, who was my first council president, my first vote on the council and just these great council presidents. And so I just thank you for your leadership. Very quickly, on my colleagues who aren't leaving, Frank, I'll just, I think you're the best story in the world. You were in my office, talking to me about trying to keep that printing department open. You didn't know what was going to happen. You lost your job. You didn't know where you were going. And within a year, you were a city councilor. And I just think you're the best. You are tenacious. You've got a big heart and you care about everyone. Mark, you've been, you know, one of my closest friends, period, out there. I thank you for everything. You've been so great to me. You're a great friend, in addition to a great city councilor. I appreciate it. And I always loved how we have that yin yang piece going because we had this great friendship and I would come in your office and say, "I'm going to do this thing." And you'd say, "That's going to drive the mayor crazy." And I'd say, "I know." You'd say, "Well, please don't tell me anymore." And I just, but I appreciated that for us, though. That was the job we were doing, but the friendship was always the friendship and you're just great to me and I can't thank you enough. Tito, I will just say that I loved working on the dropout bill with you and I think it was one of your first major pieces of legislation. And I really enjoyed getting to know you during that time. And I know you're going to continue to do real good work on a host of issues. Sal, you're the best, man. You're just, you know, so calm all the time, the opposite of me. And you just do so much good work for so many people and you do it so humbly and so quietly. And I appreciate that about you. I learned a lot by watching you. And Billy, same thing goes there. And I appreciated the times you'd pull me aside and say, "Let's bring it down a notch." And just, and talk an issue through, even if we disagreed or though often we would agree, that you would always engage in that dialogue. Never got personal and never did that. You always kept your emotions back and you're always thinking about the best way to do the job each day. And I appreciate that about you. I learned a lot by watching you as well and I thank you so much for that. Matt, I don't even know what to say. We've known each other forever. I just will say it this way, I'm very proud that you are my district councilor and you do a great job. Ayanna, another person, I got a, just a strong, you know, bond with you that predated this. I was so excited when you ran in 2009. Was so glad you were coming on the body. I'm so proud of all the work we did together, including running in tandem there in 2011. And I always appreciate your passion and the issues that you raised, which we don't think about enough, and the way you like to, you know, push those out there and not afraid to make people uncomfortable. And I think that's important in a leader, that you're going to push issues out there that people aren't comfortable with, because that's how we change things. And Council Yancey, I thank you for, on so many levels. You and I have had a lot of conversations nobody would ever know about. And I appreciate how much I learned watching you do this job. You always ask the tough questions. And, you know, you always push people to think. And I really appreciate that about you. And I used to teach my staff, when I'd get a new staffer on, I'd tell them in the budget process to listen to the questions you asked. Because you ask the toughest questions and you can learn the most by watching you. And I learned a lot by watching you. I thank you and I look forward someday to being there for the groundbreaking of the Charles Yancey Memorial High School. And I know it's going to, and I don't say that, but I say that in seriousness, it's a-
Memorial.
Sorry, not the memorial part. But the Yancey, Yancey High School. We'll be there. It's going to be great. We'll remember you well. Great idea. It's a great idea. You're right on it. It needs to happen and it will happen. And thank you for always boldly pushing for it. And just quickly in closing, Felix, you and I could fight like cats and dogs sometimes, but I always felt like there was a brotherly piece to it, because kind of thing where we would be ready to kill each other at times. But, you know, a week later, we could feel like the best of friends. And appreciated about it was the passion and the tenacity and the desire to get things done. And I'm always going to think that about you in that fond way, that, you know, it was brotherly. You could fight like you were ready to kill each other, but then you could also feel so close to somebody at the same time. So I appreciate that about you. Rob, you know, you sat here and I sat here for my first, I think, four years, maybe two years, and I just loved talking to you all the time and learning so much from you. And I think that Bill said it right. You are the model city councilor, I won't even just say district councilor, you're the model city councilor. You did this job exactly how it's supposed to be done. You made a difference and you changed lives and you did it humbly and quietly. And you're just one of the most impressive elected officials I've ever met. And you've got a phenomenal sense of humor. You never took yourself too seriously. You took the work seriously, but not you. And I just really appreciate that about you, your humility and everything you do. So thank you for everything you've done. And Mike, I feel like you're the conscience of this body and I learned so much from watching you as well. And it was a pleasure to run alongside you for mayor and to go into those forums because you are awesome. And you just really knew how to put that all out there. So I thank each and every one of you for all that you've taught me. And I'd just close with this, though. For all of that, the biggest thanks that I owe is to Adam Webster and Terry Crowley and Ann Walsh and Andrina Ferreira and Rainice Salters and Hannah White and Ally Zaltman and Eric Speed and Amy Harrington and Melina Munoz, who were my staff and made me look good, even when I didn't know what I was doing. And they were just incredible, tenacious. They did everything. They worked so hard. They helped so many people and that's what this job was about at the end of the day, helping people. I'm going to miss it, though I am excited for what comes next. But I loved it and I loved it because I was surrounded by great people and we went to work every day trying to make a difference and I think we did. So thank you all. I'll treasure my time here. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Connally.
Thank you, Mr. President. And you may not consent to make a statement, please.
Please proceed, Council.
And I will not be staying under two minutes. I will not break Council Tobin's record of two hours, for those of you who remember his farewell speech. But I certainly will not be maintaining the two minutes. And I want to, let me just say, hopefully I get through this without crying. I know my wife's here and she's been crying. And actually, my dad is here and cannot bring himself to come into the chamber. He's in my office because he will be so emotional as well. We're very emotional, hearty Italians who like to cry over everything, so. But let me first start by thanking you, Mr. President, the leader of this body, my neighbor, my friend, someone who's done an incredible job leading this body, a steady hand of leadership at a time when we in this city needed it as our council president. So I was proud to nominate you and vote for you and support you and look forward to continuing our friendship as well. So I thank you, Mr. President, as a colleague. Also want to echo the comments and thank the mayor and his staff. First, many of the staff who are here, all sitting behind us, and all of the other staff that are behind the scenes, who are in different departments, department heads, for all the folks that we work with every day, you know, whether we agree to disagree or disagree, the fact of the matter is that all of the folks sitting in this chamber and all of the mayor's staff and all of the staff, not just mayoral staff, but all the employees in city government, who work so hard every day to do the right thing for our city, to improve people's lives, to make a difference in the lives of others and to make sure city government is delivering and working for everybody. I thank all of the employees in city government, especially the mayor's staff, those that we work with, who are here today, without naming all of you sitting there. Let me just personally say thank you for all the times that you took my call, returned my call, but most importantly, always wanted to try to help, whatever the problem was we were calling on. And that's what this business is all about, helping people. And you did it all well. You did it with passion, with grace, and you really deserve a lot of credit for the dedication and years that you've put in in city government. And also want to echo the comments and thank the mayor. My friend, my neighbor, someone I've known my entire life. Want to thank the mayor for his leadership, for making this city the greatest city that it is, the greatest city in America and on earth. And for all of his years, not just as mayor, but we want to thank the mayor for his service. We want to thank the mayor for his time in public service. 10 years as a city councilor on top of being mayor for 20 years. And then also working in state government before that. He has dedicated his life to public service and helping people and dedicated his life to this city. And we all owe him a debt of gratitude. And we should all, as a city and a body, say a collective thank you to the mayor for his 30 years plus of service that he gave to the city. Mayor, we thank you so much. And we know we haven't heard the last of you and I look forward to continuing to work with you. As he and I have said, we're going to go now as neighborhood activists to community meetings. So Council McCarthy, get ready for the tag team at the next community meeting in January that we go to. But I also, before I go any further, want to just take a moment. I know Council President Murphy recognized her, but my wife is in the audience, Michelle and my son, Austin. And I want to recognize them. You know, I'm the luckiest man alive because I've got an incredible wife who I love, who has supported me from day one for a failed run for city council, for a successful run for city council, for five re-elections, and then a run for mayor, which is something that I wanted to do and I'm so glad I did and have no regrets. And so I thank Michelle for standing by me and for Amanda, Anthony and Austin. Amanda and Anthony are in school, but Austin is here with us, my buddy. And I'm so grateful and I'm lucky, no matter what happened, losing an election doesn't matter because I've got the best thing in the world and that's a wife and three beautiful kids who are my rock and who make all of this possible. So thank you, Michelle. And to my parents, and that is true, my dad is in my office. So to my mother and father, my mother is at work at the State House, she couldn't get the time off. My dad is in my office and we want to thank Kevin Honan for not letting my mother come down on her lunch break. And to my mom and dad and to my sister, Michelle, and my brother-in-law and all my family who are here, there are other family members here. The support of family is critical. I couldn't do what I've done, which was a kid from Hyde Park that was able to go and work on the staff of Senator Ted Kennedy and work at the State House for the dean of the house and run for public office if I didn't have great parents and a great family and great sister and great cousins and Michelle's family and all of these people who rallied around me. So to my mom and dad and my sister and my brother-in-laws and sisters-in-laws and cousins and everyone in the Consalvo, Ketti, Campbell, O'Brien family, I want to thank everybody for standing by me as family as well. Can't do it without family and family is the rock. And we thank them. And I'm so glad that Council Connally mentioned his staff. Because I have been blessed in my time on the city council to have what I think is the greatest staff ever assembled in public service. And as a former staffer for a United States senator and a state representative, I know how important having great staff is. And we have with us here today David and Lee and Brian. And Brian Clinton is not here, but Brian was incredible. And we had Brenda and Delia and Tom Egan and we had just an incredible staff, of folks who worked both on my campaign. S. Mail is here and Scott Smith is here, all my folks and friends who've helped me either politically or professionally and surrounded themselves and dedicated themselves and gave up their time and their lives and their personal time and could have left the public sector and made more money, but chose to stay because they believed in me and believed in our office and believed in our city and our district. So to my staff present, to my staff that's not here, I want to thank all of you for giving me the best staff and the compliments my colleagues gave me about being a great city councilor is only because I have a great staff who work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for me, for my district and for the city. So to my staff, I thank you as well, too. You know, Mr. President, like Councilor Connally, I loved this job. And I ran for mayor because I love city government. And one of the things that, you know, I want to leave with today, and I want to talk about each of my individual colleagues briefly, but what I want to leave with today is how proud we should all be as city councilors about how great this body, the Boston City Council, is. And how honored and privileged I was to serve on this body, this legislative body, this constituent service body, this public advocacy body, this body to help neighbors, this body to do budgets, this body to do whatever it is in city government that we needed to do. I was so thrilled and honored and privileged to play a small role as a city council for 11 years as part of this body. I wouldn't trade it for being in the legislature. I wouldn't trade it for being in the United States Congress. I think that we should be very proud, what we do here as a body every day, being a strong voice and having a strong voice on how this city moves forward. We are part of that process that makes Boston great by being a strong legislative and constituent service and public policy and budget and oversight body that works every day to move our neighborhoods and our city forward. And we should all be very proud of that. And I am so proud and honored to have been a part of this body. I wouldn't have traded it for anything or any other branch other than being mayor. But that speaks to how awesome our city is and city government is. Because we are the front lines every day that's working, I believe, right in people's faces in terms of being able to help people. And at the end of the day, as it's been said and it's going to be said again, that's what government is all about. It's what we talked about on the campaign trail for mayor. Government is about helping people, period. We take votes. Yes, there's politics. We have all of that stuff that's out there. But at the end of the day, each of us is in this chamber and in our districts and in our offices and in our district offices and our neighborhood office hours because we want to help people and we love helping people and making a difference in the lives of others. And that's what we do. And I love being able to say that. When people say, "What do you do for 11?" When they meet me, I say, "I help people." "What do you mean? I'm a city councilor." That's what I do. I help people, period. And that's what I loved about this job and that's what I loved about being in city government. And I love that this body had a legislative role to it as well. And I thank my colleagues for recognizing that we do have, in addition to our constituent services and our budget responsibility, that's been mentioned, that we have a legislative role. A role of just like Congress and the State House, but in the ordinance form, as you know, but for those who are watching, actually filing public policy and legislation and having hearings and getting ordinances and home petitions like today, and I congratulate Council Presley, passed. And what I love is that this body is an incubator for ideas. An incubator for great ideas that help make Boston do its job better, smarter, faster, more efficient. And that's what I loved about being a city councilor, is having a forum to be able to not just help people and improve my district and be my district's voice, but to come up with ideas. Not all of them are great. You guys don't love all of them, I get that. But a lot of ideas that we all collectively do. And you should all be proud of being part of that idea incubator that we put forward to bring new things to our city. I was proud that John's Law that I authored was the first in the nation drunk driving law that not only passed the State House, but passed the United States Congress and became law of the land and it started here as an ordinance in our city. And I thank Council President, former Council President and City Clerk Feeney for being my friend and seatmate who actually shepherded that whole process through when we did that first in the nation drunk driving law. Being able to bring real public policy matters and ideas forward that make our city a better place. And so I'm eternally grateful for having this opportunity and I'm humbled that I had the ability to do it. And I want to thank all my colleagues. And I'm just going to go right around to Council Arroyo, who our families go way back. Probably nobody in this chamber realizes the close relationship between the Arroyos and the Consalvos. Council Arroyo's dad and my dad, who are very close friends and went back to the Flynn administration and have actually, when I was a little kid growing up, there was many nights Felix Arroyo Sr. was having dinner at my kitchen table with my mom and dad, going over public policy matters. And I'm the only person, a history footnote, that has actually lost to two Arroyos. I lost to Felix's dad when I ran at large and I lost to Felix Jr. when I ran for mayor. So I hope if I ever run again, there's no Arroyo in the race. Because I'm sick of losing to Arroyos. But Felix has, just like his dad, has been an incredible voice on social policy issues in our city. And particularly for Felix, the work you do with youth, the work you do with kids and coaching and all of the things that you've done, advocating for being the loudest voice for summer jobs and making sure youth have a voice in this chamber and the public hearing process, you deserve a lot of credit for what you did. And for your great run for mayor as well and the voice and the ideas that you lent to the mayor's race that helped shape the debate moving forward. Council Frank Baker, we became fast friends when he got elected. We worked on redistricting together. And it's not just because we're the two shortest members of the city council, but we formed a fast friendship. And it's because Council Baker gets it. He understands the importance of what the city council is and what it does and what his role is. And in his short time here, I've never seen anybody hit the ground running faster than being an advocate for his district and issues that he cares about like substance abuse issues and other things than Council Frank Baker. And he's going to have a long history here advocating for his district and for Dorchester and for the city. And I'm really impressed and commend you. Council Siomo has been a great friend for many years and he deserves a lot of credit. And I'm humbled by folks saying that I was a great district councilor. Council Siomo epitomizes also being what a district councilor is. And we thank him for- And we thank him for, and I always try to dissuade him, for chairing the Ways and Means Committee. And every year he says, should I take the Ways and Means Committee again? And I said, what, are you crazy? You've had it, do something else. But he actually loves the budget process and analyzing the budget and the numbers and working with the administration to make sure that we're going to have a balanced, even budget that helps impact all our neighborhoods. So Mark, thank you for that, what you do as a councillor. To Council Conley for his very eloquent remarks, I thank him. I know you made my dad cry even more with those remarks. And thank you for being a friend and a great run for mayor, both in the preliminary and in the final. All of us who ran for mayor, we didn't win in this chamber, but you, more than anybody as well, contributed to the debate. In the final, you drove the debate. A lot of the things that you talked about are going to be things that are implemented in the next administration. And so you should be very proud of that. And yes, we thank you for your work in education. And you and I always talk about this, but not just as city councillors, but as a dad with two, soon to be three kids in the system, I thank you personally for your advocacy on public schools and for my kid's school and for public policy that's going to affect how my kids are educated for the next eight to 10 years in the Boston Public School. So on a personal level, Michelle and I thank you for that. And I'm glad Council Siomo said it, not just education, your work on the environment, your work on the bottle bill, your work on so many other things that you did in this body were overshadowed by what you did on education. But make no mistake about it, you had a total package of public policy that you didn't care about in this city and everybody should know it. So I thank you for what you did. Council Jackson, I also want to thank you for being someone who cares so much about your district and who cares so much about fighting for your district and who is willingness to come right onto this body and tackle the tough issues both in your district and in our city and being a voice for that, holding us all accountable for not just what's happening in your district, but similar issues that might be happening everywhere. You make us all aware of those issues and what we should be prioritizing and how it impacts our own districts and impacts this entire city. Another councillor who's going to have a long and distinguished career and someone who hit the ground running because you care and you get it and you love this business and you love helping people. To my buddy Sal Lamatina, who I'm going to try and make cry right now because there's so sentimental as I am, but Sal Lamatina has been a friend for years, long before we both ran for the city council. His dad, my dad and he go back together for many years. And I want to thank Sal for being a great friend, but also for your contributions to this city where you don't get enough credit for the great things you do and how hard you work and the ideas that you have. Because you're a humble guy who's not in it for the headlines, you're in it to get things done. And there are a lot of things, and sometimes we make fun of you, like phone books, when you want to ban phone books and when you tried to ban ice cream trucks from the city and my kid Austin is still mad at you for that. You always work on the issues that are important to our city. And you care about your district, you care about the people in your district and you wear your love of government and governing on your sleeve. And that is so refreshing to see someone who is not ashamed or afraid to be in public service and on the city council. You're an awesome city councillor and you're going to have a huge future in this city and I'm proud to just be your friend on that. And to Council Linnerhand as well, thank you for also serving our city. And we owe Council Linnerhand a debt of gratitude, not just for being a city councillor, but again, like the mayor, for dedicating, how many years councillor? 26 years of public service to our city when he could have been doing anything else. He's involved in his neighborhood, he's a fierce advocate for his district and his community, he has served this city with great distinction, and he's been a steady and responsible and thoughtful voice on the city council on a whole range of issues from economic development to many other public policy matters, including what you did to the chamber with the hearing and all of that kind of stuff. So Bill, thank you for your advice and guidance and thank you, most importantly, for your service to the people of this city. To my friend Matt O'Malley, another lover of public policy and the ordinance side and for doing a great job chairing government relations, we know he does the district council stuff great. No one handles the constituent services better in office hours, but for your love, what I love is that you love that public policy role and you relish being the chair of government operations because you want to dive into those issues and make sure that whether it's your issue, the mayor's issues or our issues, we're getting to the right common ground that doesn't work best politically, that works best for this city. And you did a great job and you should continue to be government office chair if that's what you wish because you, I love that you love the public policy side of it as well. And Council Presley, your advocacy, as Council Conley said, for those issues that nobody else wants to talk about is a breath of fresh air in our city and in this body and is so needed. As a dad of a daughter named Amanda, I thank you for your advocacy of women's issues in our city and for being a voice for women and youth and families on this body and for making sure that the council will forever play an active role in those issues that are important to women and girls around our city. I'm counting on you for my daughter's future to keep being that voice for our city, keeping that voice on women and girls and youth and so many other things that you've done. And thank you for your thoughtful approach to legislating and governing. And as a former congressional staffer, we share that bond for understanding how important that is. So I thank you for that. And Council Ross, for being, for a great run for mayor, for being a thoughtful voice in the mayor's race and respectful and collegial, as was Council Conley and Council Arroyo. You have been an innovator, someone who brings great ideas to our city, someone who also loves and understands the public policy. And I really appreciate and respect the legislator side that you do, like me and others, to file ordinances and home petition as the solution to problems as you see fit to change public policy through that role. And you know, clearly your campaign for mayor and your run to the city council was about bringing innovative and new ideas and a different way of governing and thinking. And that's an important dialogue that you brought to our city. And you've been a great friend and I appreciate that you finally admitted that despite how I look, I'm actually a better athlete than you. Don't have to be skinny to be an athlete, folks. So I'm Council Ross.
I know, I'll stand up.
I said an athlete, Steve.
I know. You said you don't have to be skinny, Rob.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mike, for your friendship and guidance and for your services as our council presidents for the many things that you did. And to Council Yancey, we agreed more than we disagreed, people will find that hard to believe, but it's true. But even when we disagreed, I still admire the fact that you stand by your convictions for what you believe in, even when I don't agree with it. You, whether it's Mattapan High School or so many other issues, are seeking diversity in our city or asking tough questions during our budget hearings, I always respect the fact that you're not afraid to say what's on your mind, to stand up for what you believe in and to fight for the issues you care about. And like many other folks who have served in city government, it's important to remember that Council Yancey, the longest-serving member of this body, has dedicated his life also to public service. And we all in this city should congratulate and thank him and owe him a debt of gratitude for the sacrifices he's made for 30 years serving our city. Council Yancey, thank you very much for your service as well. And so in closing, and I'm not sure I went on as long as John Conley, we might have been even, but we certainly didn't go on as long as John Tobin. I would like to just say thank you. Thank you to the voters of District Five and the people of District Five for giving me the honor of serving for 11 years. Thank you to the mayor and his team for being partners in government, making sure that we're all working together for the common good of the people, even when we disagree and always finding common ground when we do disagree. And to my colleagues in this body for supporting me, for working with me, for supporting my crazy ideas like rubber sidewalks, Matt, I leave that legacy to you. I'm charging you with getting rubber sidewalks done in the city. And to our incoming colleagues who are here, I have two words for you, Governing Magazine, get on it.
Oh my God.
Because that's where they all come from. To my colleagues, thank you for your friendship, thank you for your service to our city, thank you for making sure that this body has a voice both legislatively, constituent-wise and in public policy to be moving our city forward. I'm honored and grateful to have served here. I loved it and I have no regrets and look forward to the next chapter of my life, both professionally and in the civic life of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Consalvo. How's this councillor Felix Arroyo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so grateful that John and Rob took the time to speak about each person so that I don't have to. I want to start by thanking my family and just putting up with what has now become a generational dream in my family to serve, serve the public here in Boston. And those of you who do this know the toll that takes on, on a family. And so you all know why I'm thanking them. And everything that your family has had to put up with, so has mine, and everything that my family's had to put up with, so has yours. And so I thank my family, but I also want you to know that I hold your families in the same esteem because I know the difficult toll that this takes on them. You know, I take time to, you know, I do want to go around and just acknowledge my colleagues here today. Council Baker, first time that I had an interaction with Council Frank Baker, I was a fairly new city councillor at a neighborhood association meeting in Dorchester and he didn't like something I said very much. So he let me know about it in front of about 56 people. And he let me know about it pretty forcefully. You know, and I remember walking out of that meeting going, who is that guy? And a few months later, he's sitting next to me here as a city councillor and he takes that same passion and that same energy in everything he does. And he's become really a fast friend of mine. You know, one of the things I've grown to cherish the most in people is their ability to tell you where they're standing at all times. And no one in this building has ever wondered where Frank Baker stands on any issue. And that, sir, is truly a compliment. It's something I consider my dad did, something I hope that I did, and it's something that you do. So thank you for your service, Dorchester's lucky to have you as their city councillor. To Mark, boy that I enjoy telling Mark no every time he asks me if I was voting for the budget. It was like a treat. I would come in and somewhere around, you know, the timeframe, you know, late May, early June, you get that call from Mark Siomo and I would, I knew I was just going to tell him no. It didn't matter if I was voting for it or not, I just enjoyed it because his reaction was always like, you're always going for this. But with all seriousness, he's the only Ways and Means Chair I've knew, I've known since I've been here. And he always took whatever issues I brought to him important. He took it as if it mattered to him. And I knew that if I sat with Mark and said, here are the three things that matter the most to me, he would then go and fight for those three things and then come back to me with an answer and then always be stunned when I came back with a fourth and a fifth most important thing that mattered to me. And so I thank you, Mark, for having been, yeah, that goalpost moved so much. But I thank you, Mark, for having the work you've done. I think that we all know one of the most important things we do here is, is the budget. And since I've been here, we had one person leading that effort, that's you, Mark, and I'm so grateful for it. To John, I remember when you were first elected, some months thereafter, randomly, we're on the same rental car bus in San Juan, Puerto Rico. I'm there, I think I was alone or with, I don't even remember, maybe with one of my brothers. And right across from me is John Conley and his wife. And I'm staring at him going, I know this guy. And he's staring at me and he goes, hey, I'm John. And I'm going, can I get away from you at any point in my life? And from then on, we've always had these really interesting interactions. Few people will know that after one of our, I don't call them arguments, disagreements, adults have disagreements. One of our disagreements, I went to his house with olive oil because I didn't know where you can buy an olive branch. And I'm sitting in West Roxbury and he's sitting there holding his kid. And we grew in appreciation for each other in that meeting. And I'll say about schools, John, while we didn't always agree with the how, that's well understood, we always agreed with the what and the why. The what being that every child in this city deserves a quality education. And the why, because those are our children, every single one of them, whether we know them or not. I know that we always agree with the what and why. And our differences became large because we sat here on a body together. But in fact, we're small if you really look at it from a distance. And I appreciate your advocacy for the young people in this city and knowing that every one of those children, all 57,000 of them, is our child. To Robbie, we share a neighborhood. I know you love your whole district, I know you love Mattapan, I know you love Rosendale, I know you love Hyde Park, but we share Hyde Park. I was raised in Hyde Park. It's one of the three neighborhoods that I tell people I'm from. We love that neighborhood. It's one of the last standing working class neighborhoods in this city. Where you could dream to own a home, where you can play outside and your child is safe and you know they're safe. And Robbie, you've done an awful lot to make sure that district and the neighborhood that I grew up in, the neighborhood my mother still lives in, that when I go home on Sundays to have dinner, I go to Hyde Park, Massachusetts. You've done an awful lot to make Hyde Park proud. You're one of Hyde Park's sons, I like to think I am, but I know you are and they're so proud of you. And one of the things I'll never forget is when I first got on the council, I got this great idea that I wanted to do dialogues around race and have trainings around race with all of the councillors. And Robbie partnered with me on that. And we worked together on that and worked to make sure that our colleagues were invited and always felt welcome to come and talk about race and how it affects the work we do. I'll never forget it, Rob, thank you. Tito, someone I've known well before I was on the city council, someone who makes us all jealous because he wins elections with 84% of the vote consistently, but someone who's become a very good friend thereafter. It's no secret to those here that Tito and I worked together an awful lot here on the council. We would talk about strategy together. We didn't always agree on what the strategic moves would be or what the points would be, but we won more than we lost. He's always remembered who he is and where he came from. And for that, I'll always be grateful. And some person who has shared personal stories here on the council floor that so many of us, still to this day, we don't share our own stories. And he's used those stories to really help bring change in our city. I appreciate you, Tito, and I'm looking forward to watching what you're going to do here on the body. To Sal, who was really one of the closest friends that I've created here on the council, did not know him before, he didn't support me in my race when I first ran in '09. You know, and I made a point of just going to get to know him and meet him and saying hello, doing the whole na na I won thing. He'd become like an uncle to me. I would call him, whether it was professional problems or personal problems, I would call Sal Lamatina. That's a relationship people here maybe don't know about, Sal, but you've become one of my closest friends and I'm very grateful for you. And I know how much you love your district and I know how much you love Boston. You know, to Billy, you know, when I was running for mayor, Dave Bernstein from Boston Magazine did this whole thing about who were the councillors you vote the most like? Turns out, I vote the most like Tito Jackson. I vote the least like Bill Linnerhand. But again, I'd say something that I said about Frank, I say about Billy, I never had any question about where he stood on anything. And we had some of the most honest conversations with each other, the most, whether it was through redistricting, we all know how difficult a process that was for us as a body when we began in someplace well, we shared a wall. And so we would often talk to each other and be really straightforward with each other, knew exactly what the plays were that were happening before us. I always knew that if I wanted to get an honest opinion about something, whether it was the body or about myself, I can call Billy and he'll, he'll let me know what's going on. He's someone who has let me know more than once whether or not my shirt was on fire. And I appreciate you for that, Bill. I wish you luck in the future as you move forward in a role you'll be playing here or could be playing here on the council. To Matt, I didn't support Matt in his first run for the city council, I was actually with his opponent, supporting his opponent. And you know, people have different ways of reacting to that. Matt took what I think is the very grown-up way of reacting to that. The race was over, we had a conversation maybe a couple of days thereafter and it was never brought up again. And we just worked together. He's my city councillor, you know, represents Jamaica Plain in West Roxbury very well. I heard he was silly enough to get a tattoo of his, of his, of his district number. I just hope that could turn it to something else later. But he did that because he loves his district and he loves the council. And you know, Matt, I've had some really great times working with you. One in particular was around the creation of the Margarita Muniz High School. I never told you about it, but for me to be a Spanish language speaker here, Spanish being my first language frankly, to have the possibility of a high school where it's a two-way bilingual school and to have Matt O'Malley, my district councillor, lead that charge, I didn't even lead it, lead the charge and help make sure that Margarita Muniz was available and then had a space to work out of, I'm so grateful for that, Matt, and I was happy to work with you on that. Ayana, the class amongst the classless at times, I would say. I have no sense of what it's like to be the only woman on the body. I can't imagine it's easy. Can't imagine it's always fun. If I'd say this, you stood tall and you continue to stand tall. We have all watched you go through some of the most personal tragedies that someone can go through here. You lost your shero, not only your mother, but your best friend. And an only child to a single mother, we can't, I don't think any of us can imagine how difficult that is, but she bounced back strong. She was strong throughout the whole process. We'll always share that we got elected together, twice. And I'm so proud of you, and I know that I'll be reading about you and watching you moving forward. To Mike, who was the first council president that I've had here, and allowed me to come up with the silly committee that I came up with where I basically picked everything I liked and put it all in one. That's how I got Labor Youth Affairs, and I forget what it was in the beginning, and now it's Health. But everyone here is trying to figure out how those things are related. They're not, I'll admit it now. But Mike helped me create a committee where I could feel comfortable and do some work. I remember first moving into the office, he helped me decorate the office, put that out there, he walked in and started telling me where to put stuff. He also told me to change my ties, and at one point actually took a tie off of me and put another one on me. But more than that, allowed me to play a leadership role at a very early moment here on the council. Through the firefighters, and choosing me along with Sal to serve in that negotiating sessions and allow me to play a role that I was happy to play, but one that I knew the council president has chosen and had the belief in me to be able to play that role. And also, I think something about Mike that I just want to share is that sometimes we get so caught up on our issue and our passion, our belief in it. Mike is the type of person who tries to figure out how to get to a solution. And boy, is that, I think, underestimated on this body. Mike, I really appreciate that you always try to figure out how to get to yes, and how to make sure that people can have principled compromise, not compromise their principles, and get to yes. You did that, and I appreciate that. Charles, what can I say about somebody who has actually known me, I believe, since I was born? Can't be easy for you to look at somebody you were born, who you saw get born, serve on the council with you. But I gotta say, the many years you put on this council, there were more than one time that I've called Charles just to ask him about how things work here. I tell you something, sometimes we have to look up the rules. He doesn't have to. Sometimes we have to look up how much a department has in their budget, or how many people of color they've hired. But what worked, he doesn't have to look that up. He knows it. It's in him. He loves this city. He's been a longtime leader on the, on the council, and I'm looking forward to him any more years. To Steve, who, whose office I sit in now, you know, also, beginning of his presidency, believed in me and allowed me to play roles here on the council that maybe others wouldn't have because of my age, because of my time served. And I'll also say, you know, your three years on the council weren't an easy one, weren't easy ones. A number of issues came before us, but you had, you were solid throughout, calm throughout, and you weren't allowed yourself to be guided by outside pressures. Instead, you allowed yourself to be guided by us, your councillors. The mayor, who's been the mayor since I was 14 years old, same thing could be said about Matt, we were both 14, he became the mayor, just done great things in this city. He's lived the dream. You know, I often say, what's the dream? You know, we were all taught, leave this world just a little better than how you found it. I think all of us have been taught that at some point in our lives. The American actually look at his life right now and know that he did that. And so he's lived the dream, and we're all grateful that he was able to live that dream because that meant the city we live in is a better city. I just want to say, folks, there's something that I, I've had on my Facebook page literally since I was elected, because I knew the end would come. And that is that, like most things, politics is temporary. What's important is not how long you hold political office, what's important is what you stood for, advocated for, fought for, and organized for while you had the chance. One day, each and one of you will be given your farewell speech. That will happen. Feel good about my four years on the city council. I feel good about what we fought for, worrying about those most in need, knowing that there were some in our city who, night after night, went to bed not knowing where dinner was gonna come from, would go to school hungry, single mothers who were still looking for work, single fathers who felt useless and helpless because they couldn't provide for their families, knowing that 20% of those who live in this city don't have the life that we have, don't have the life that we've been blessed to have, but deserve it, but deserve it. And knowing that we on the city council can do something about that, maybe small, maybe large, but every day we could do something about it. We know that by delivering basic city services, we are in fact delivering justice every day. And we know that we can create real change. I tried with Invest in Boston, and I did that with all of you. We passed Invest in Boston here, which says we will not only do business with banks and invest in our neighborhoods, and we had to override a veto for the first time in 19 years to do that. And you did that, and I appreciate you. There'll be times, because it happened to me, where you get caught up with the politics of personality. You get caught up with even your own egos. None of us are innocent of have, of not having had a flair of egotism. But it is in those moments that we have got to remind ourselves why we're really here. What drove us to knock on doors for hours at a time? What drove us to call our grandmothers who can least afford it and say, I need you to donate the maximum right now? And what drove us is a love of the city that I know we all share, those who serve here today and those who'll be coming and sitting here on January 6th. Do your very best to get all that rest of the stuff out of the way. Sometimes the noise is loud, but it's not right. But sometimes the noise is loud, and it is right. And we have got to do our best to know the difference. So I'm grateful for my time to have served with you. I just want to say something about this city. It's the only city I know, never lived anywhere else. I was born in the South End, raised in High Park, and now I live in Jamaica Plain. Kids like me, I don't know if we're supposed to serve on the city council, and I don't know if we're supposed to be able to run for mayor. I truly did have to heat my house with the oven. I truly did learn Spanish as my first language. Yet this is the city that allows that to happen, that allows those dreams to be real. I know that a kid like me, I didn't grow up believing that I would sit for the four years on the city council in the same chair my father sat in. You know, he told me something when I won. He said, a lot was made about the fact that I was the first Latino on the Boston City Council. Today, because you won, I'm no longer the last, and that's the most important thing to me. I'm looking forward to the day that I could say that to someone else. But I'm so grateful for all of you because the work you do make that easier to happen. So thank you for the time. Thank you for being my colleagues.
Chair recognizes councillor Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. You may consent to make a statement.
Please proceed, councillor Ross.
Thank you. I was a young man when I started this meeting today. I was a young man when I started this job. I was 27 years old when I was elected. And I want to share with you some of my thoughts about what I've learned along the way, but I want to thank you, Mr. President, congratulate you for your work over these last three years. I was proud to have you as my vice president and to have you succeed me and to support that. And you've done a fabulous job. You should be proud of the work that you've done. So what I've learned over these last 14 years is that we're stronger when we stand together. I mean, consider what's happening in Congress right now and how the American people have really lost faith in them. I think most of that has to do with that divisiveness. And I think when we stand together as we have and as we do, I think people want that, and it makes us stronger and it makes us better. I know there are barriers between us, but you shouldn't look to those barriers. You should find that statesman and stateswoman in you and use those skills that you all have. I've learned that the best ideas come from all of us. I think it's the greatest resource we have. I know there's not a lot of state and federal funds, and I know that there's not a lot of city funds to do all the things we want, but our greatest resource are our ideas. I mean, think about today, what councillor Presley put forward, the references that were made to this Boston Common Committee, and all the work that we've done. Really, the best work happens because of those ideas, and you don't need anything else but just a hunger in order to get that going. I think there are other opportunities moving forward to use some of those ideas. One that I have talked about is the Indigo Line, and that opportunity to work together as three city councillors, disparate city councillors, separate councillors, but coming together is very powerful. And, you know, to do that along that line could accomplish the same thing. I learned from people like Steve Ross, my dad, who I appreciate the kind comments from everyone, that you have to look for the good in other people. And I see good in all of you, and I appreciate all of you. I'll go around the horn, I'll start with you, Felix, and say that you wear your heart on your sleeve, and I appreciate that. You're probably the most emotional councillor here, and that is really a tough kind of three-way, four-way fight, but in the end, I think you win, and I'm so refreshed by that. And don't ever stop doing that. Frank, you're also pretty emotional, but what I love about you is your independence. I think it's the quality that people in government need, and you have it the most, and I'll always respect that. Councillor Siomo, I've always called you the workhorse, not the show horse, and I still believe that. And yes, you were my seventh vote for city council president. I'll never forget that, and I'll always appreciate our friendship for now and in the future. John, I feel like I learned more about you these last few months as you ran for mayor and respected you more in these last few months in the way that you conducted yourself than I've known you for the entire time you've served on the council, and you should be proud of that. That is how you're going out in the minds of the people of this city, and I think it's a great way to go. Rob, you know, your ideas, I love the government technology stuff, but I think my greatest time ever with you was when you and I beat Jack Harrington and Craig Langhorst in that basketball game. You played that game so well, and you know how bad I am, and for that victory to happen, as great as that campaign game that we had during the mayor's race was, I think that was one better. I always appreciate our friendship. Tito, I think you like doing this job more than anyone here. I really do. And that's infectious. And the other thing about you is that I could be anywhere and mentioned to someone that I serve on the Boston City Council, and they will always ask if I know the same person. It happens more than anyone else here. I'm always asked the question, oh, you know Tito Jackson? As a matter of fact, I do. He's a great guy. Keep doing what you're doing. Sal, you're the most loved member of this council, maybe ever. Everyone here loves you more than they love anyone else. You should be, you should be proud of that. You should be proud of that. That is not easy to do. It goes to the heart of who you are. I count myself among those people too, who love you so much for the work you do. Bill, thank you for the friendship you have with my dad and for the kind words you've always said about him, and for expecting me to live up to the model that he holds. I also really respect what you've done with Kevin Fitzgerald and that family, and the leadership you've shown there and the kindness you've shown there leads me to believe that that's something you will always be able to do. Matt, my jogging partner, my running partner, we need to get you back out there. You are, you are the statesman of this body, and that's something you're gonna have to live up to, always, because once a statement, always a statement. You're also a dear friend, and I appreciate that. Ayana Presley is the best speaker here and probably the kindest, but when you're on the other side of that, that's the other side I love too, right? We've all seen that other side. It comes out and flares every once in a while. It's an awesome side of you. I, I, but I appreciate all you bring to this, to this council, and I really do think that you make us look so good. So thank you for that. And councillor Yancey, you are a gentleman. You are a gentleman, and everyone here should always treat you as such. I've learned much from you, sitting next to you. I'd also like to thank the mayor of the city. I worked for the mayor. That was my first political job, and I wouldn't have continued if I didn't see his example that he set. At, at the end of the day, he has a giant heart, which really is the other thing you need in this business. And that has kept him so focused and so good at what he does. And his staff, who I've worked with as colleagues and known as dear friends, will always be special to me. I want to thank my staff. They're like my family, and they, they keep me in check, and they're all very terrific. Many of them who have worked with me for years, for six and seven years. I think it says a lot about our team and our coming together. I want to close with a quote that Maureen Feeney and I had a chance to hear. We headed up one year to see our friend, Senate President Murray, get inaugurated. And it was Jack Hart who stood up and gave a real beautiful introduction to Terry Murray. And he quoted this Norman Vincent Peale quote, and I think it's appropriate. And it is, "No matter how dark things seem to be or actually are, raise your sights and see the possibilities. Always see them, for they are always there." Thank you, everyone.
Not to be outdone, I have a few comments of my own. You have all bestowed on me the greatest honor of my professional lifetime, the honor of leading this body that I love very, very much. And I follow in the footsteps of Charles Yancey, of Maureen Feeney, of Mike Ross, and each of you gave this job, the presidency of this body, your very best when you were at it. And I've done that for the past three years. And I think the body has survived and thrived during all of our presidencies. And during the course of this past reelection year, one of the things I kept saying out in the neighborhoods, we'd go to these various, is that, you know, we have a mayor and 13 other elected officials who I've been proud to serve with for the past, for me, going into my 18th year. And each and every one of you bring passion and talents to doing the right thing, to being fair, to being the equalizer, to being the answer in people's lives, whether it's legislatively, constituent services, whether it's with your advocates hats on. Each of you are motivated by your hearts, all of you. And you all reflect great credit, all of you, in public service. And we're, we're going to lose four colleagues and friends, councillor Arroyo, councillor Connally, my pal and neighbor councillor Consalvo and councillor Ross. And we're gonna pick up councillor Flaherty, councillor McCarthy, councillor Wu, and councillor Zakim, who all have shown me both here in this chamber, in councillor Flaherty's Park, and out in the streets of Boston that they have the passion and talent to give to the people of Boston. So it's been a great honor for me to lead the body, and I'm gonna miss you all and the four who are departing. You've all left indelible imprints in the mind of every Bostonian, your, your contributions to this city, great and small, and your legacy of leadership, each and every one of you. And all of you, you know, I think councillor Ross said at last, mentioned Washington DC. I know a couple of people did. You know, Washington DC is paralyzed down there, and I don't know why that is because I've never served down there. But I know that we serve with people who are real, who have souls to their core, and who are genuinely interested about helping people here. And if some of that could be exported to that bigger stage down there, I think the United States government would be better served. So thank you for the high honor. Thank you all for your friendships, and Happy New Year to everybody. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Now, will all please stand as the council prepares to adjourn for the year of 2013. We will be closing in memory of the following individuals as we prepare to adjourn the meeting of December 18th, 2013, for councillor Yancey, Agnes Marshall, Kenneth Benjamin, a cousin of councillor Yancey, and Karen Yancey Frazier, another cousin of councillor Yancey. For councillor Lamatina, Felipe Flores Taiudo, and Salvatore Casaro. For councillors Lenehan and Baker, William A. Flynn. For councillor Siomo, Ellen Virginia Sullivan, and George J. Brambilla, who is the brother of the former business manager, the city councillor, councillor Marilyn Brambilla. For councillor Consalvo, for George Gertis, Alex Gertis, who normally sits with us, his dad, passed away. And for councillor O'Malley, Thomas J. Plunkett. Ask all to, for a moment of silence and keeping those people in their prayers. The chair now moves that when the council adjourns, it will do so in The Chair now moves that when the council adjourns, it will do so in sine de. Council stands adjourned.